All right, ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand? Join Councilman Jim Case in our pledge and remain standing for our prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow with me in prayer? Our Father in Heaven, we come to this time of the year of being able to just think about the things that we're thankful for and how many blessings that You've given to each one of us. And so, we just want to come to You tonight thanking You for our life, thank You for our community, thank You for all the service people that work day in and day out to make this a place to live and to enjoy. We just ask that You be with the meeting tonight and be with each council member as they listen and hear and need to make a decision. We just ask that You give them a blessing tonight in that decision. Thank You, Father, and we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Don. The call to order, our Guthrie Public Works Authority Meeting of November 2nd. The second item on the agenda is public comments and public announcements, and we have a proclamation that I will be reading. A few ladies would like to come and join me here. This is a proclamation for Adoption Awareness Month. And whereas Oklahoma recognizes the family as the very foundation of our state and the primary source of love, identity, self-esteem, and support for the children of our city, county, and state, and whereas the State of Oklahoma and the local Department of Human Services report that over 3,000 children in the State of Oklahoma and 44 children from Guthrie and the surrounding communities in Logan County are waiting on a permanent family they can call their own, and whereas these children can thrive, reach their full potential, and spread their wings when given the loving and firm foundation of family, and whereas many of these children are older than age 10 and are part or are a part of a sibling group, making them more difficult to adopt, thus making it necessary to find special adoptive families who will keep the child's family of origin intact. Whereas, we honor the adoptive families who open their homes and their hearts to embrace these children as a part of their family, to help them grow and develop, giving the love, support, and education that they need to become successful adults. And whereas numerous individuals along with public and private organizations are working to increase public awareness of children who are waiting on a permanent family, of youth who are waiting, who are reaching 18, the age out of foster care, and of the enduring and valuable contributions of adoptive families. And whereas all citizens of Guthrie are urged to volunteer their energies and talents on behalf of children waiting on a family or behalf of adoptive parents and on behalf of child welfare professionals in Guthrie who find adoptive homes for children and make adoption programs work. Now therefore, I, Stephen J. Gentling, Mayor of the City of Guthrie, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2017 in the City of Guthrie as Adoption Awareness Month.
Thank you, Mr. Don.
Do you want to say a few words?
Just a moment. We just want to honor you with a T-shirt, a pro-adoption T-shirt. And on behalf of Oklahoma Department of Human Services, we want to honor you and our adoptive families. We have staff here today in addition to myself. We have Gray Stevenson, Callie Seibert, Kaitlin Wood, Leanne Rice, Brandy Parks, and Tracy Zerda are our adoption families that are here to honor you as well. And we want to honor them while we're here as well. Thank you, Brandy.
I've been instructed by our audiovisual person if we could maybe get in line over here facing the audience for another photo op.
He's coming in right now, Mary.
There you go. It's an opportunity that's never gonna come again.
Smile, three, two, one. Okay, thank you so much.
They just adopted me, that's it.
I was just a mire in your mouth.
Okay, item number three on our agenda is the consent agenda, which is just item A, which is the approval of the minutes of the Guthrie Public Works Meeting of October 17.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Any discussion of that minutes? Submit your votes, please.
All votes ready.
See the votes. We have somebody voting twice.
Tayler.
I voted once.
Thank everybody, Jeff.
Yeah.
He kinda likes that crimson up there, I think is what the deal is. I will designate that as unanimous approval of the consent agenda item A. With that, item number four is our adjournment, adjourn our Public Works Authority Meeting of the 17th, and I call to order our city council meeting also of November 7th. I said 17th, November 7th. Our consent agenda items include items A through D. A is the approval of our city council meeting of October 17th. B is the approval granting excess absences to Justin Fortney, a member of the Convention and Visitors Board. C is approval to declare some items of city property excess and allow them to be sold or surplused. D is approval of budget amendment number one, which is amending our general fund and fire fund, grant fund, and hotel motel fund, and as well as capital project fund. Those are the four items on the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
In a second. Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion of those four items? Now submit your votes, please.
All votes ready.
Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval of the consent agendas items A through D. Item number three is the approval of the purchasing agent to solicit bids for the construction of a sidewalk near the Guthrie Upper Elementary School on Walnut and just past Hillcrest Avenue as a part of the Safe Roots to School Grant Fund Project. Staff comments?
The only thing I want to point out is we handed out tonight at your seats a budget or cost estimate. Construction cost is just over $212,000. Of course, the 100% grant is $200,000, so if the bid actually come in for that amount, we would have to contribute to $12,000 difference. The engineering part of it is an 80% grant, 20% match. Our match on the engineering is $14,696.20. The city has already paid that, so going forward, the only balance that we would owe or not get reimbursed for is the additional $12,000 if the bid comes in over the $200,000 grant. And this is one where you pay for it and then apply and get reimbursed by old debt.
Okay, all right.
So moved.
Second. Is there any other discussion? Clearly, an opportunity to take advantage of those kinds of matching percentages is a really good thing for our community and for the kids that use the sidewalk. Submit your votes, please.
All votes ready.
See the votes. Unanimous approval of item number three to allow the purchasing agents to solicit bids on that sidewalk. Item number four is a public hearing and discussion action concerning recommendation from the Guthrie Planning Commission to grant special use permit with conditions for a bed and breakfast in the R1 zoning at the location of 710 East Warner Avenue. The applicants, are there representatives of the applicants that are here? Would you like to come and talk to the council about your application and what it is for?
I would. My name is Kristy Satterly. My address is 4109 Sooner Court in Edmund. And I'm the representative for this project. So what we would like to have the special use permit approved for at 710 East Warner is for a retreat center for quilters, scrapbookers, knitters, and other crafters to gather together to create in a quiet, beautiful environment. All of this will be experienced in a turn-of-the-century American four-square home away from the distractions of home and work responsibilities. Our ideal customers are aged 30 to 70 with expendable income who enjoy creative outlets such as quilting or scrapbooking, and they seek time away from the daily rigor of home and work to escape to a quiet and restorative place to be able to create without distractions while enjoying their handcrafts in the company of friends who have similar interests. 710's location is one of its greatest assets. Other than the various dining options in Guthrie, within one mile, our guests will find a Walgreens, one-hour photograph printing, extra special fabric, which is located here in Guthrie, Sooner Quilts, which is about six miles south on Sooner Road. And we just think it would be a great asset to the City of Guthrie. I'm ready to answer.
And a good location for what you're wanting to do.
Yes, it's a beautiful home that we love, and we really want to keep the historical connection to. I've got, we're working with a licensed interior designer named Mark Taylor, who was the lead designer on the Dominion House, and he's also the chairman of the Interior Design and Landscape Architecture Licensing Board of the State. He's also the interior designer that's been appointed to the Governor's Mansion for quite some time, so he's got some pretty great credentials. And so, he's who we're using on the project, and that's just a letter from him stating that. I know that a lot of the issues brought up during the zoning commission are parking. We've got a parking plan, and it's my understanding it's already been approved by the city engineer. I don't know if you guys want to see a copy of that. I have that as well for you.
See what it looks like. We may have that already in our package.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. It's already in our package.
And just another little thing for you. You might have to share. I only have four copies. And what these pictures are of this, these are photographs that were taken at a retreat that I was in attendance at. This is what happens at a retreat. People are quilting, people are scrapbooking, they're journaling, they're reading books. We're not having parties or creating a lot of noise. Typically, women are major, you know, crafters. There, I'm sure there are men that craft, but, you know, we just want to provide a place for people to gather and be able to work on their crafts.
Is this exclusively what you plan to do?
Uh-huh.
Nothing else?
Well, no, not.
So if I wanted to rent it, I couldn't?
Well, I mean, our marketing efforts are going to be for the scrapbooking and quilters. I mean, my husband's business partner's wife is a writer, and she said, "Oh, that would be a great writer's retreat," or a yoga retreat, or, "But if you wanted to have a, I mean, if you wanted to rent the house out and not use the crafting facilities," I mean, you could.
So it isn't exclusive to quilting or scrapbooking?
No, no, but that's our demographic, and that's our marketing. One of the reasons that we thought that Guthrie would be a great place is we love the community. I used to work in Guthrie, my husband and I got married in Guthrie. We've always loved Guthrie. All the places that we try to go to are booked. Usually, they're hard to get into, there's waiting lists of up to a year, so I don't anticipate us having a lot of availability outside of crafters or quilters.
Kristy, will there be additional bathrooms put in with the remodeling that you're doing?
We don't have plans to do that at this time, but we're going to continually, you know, keep the property updated and...
I think that was one of the concerns that was exposed to me.
Yeah, there's currently two bathrooms in the home, and they're full bathrooms, tub, shower, sink, toilet.
I might point out that when you look at the existing building code that was adopted by the city, two bathrooms are appropriate for four-bedroom boarding house.
Okay, thank you.
How much money are you going to spend if you do like outdoor work? Are you going to do that? I mean, are you going to...
Our budget right now is $117,775.
That's for outside of the entire...
That's the project. We've got HVAC, new windows, new electrical, a new back door, landscaping, parking. It's just, it's kind of endless, really. Our budget's actually gone up from our initial...
What do you intend to do as far as landscaping? What kind of things do you have in mind?
Well, just clean it up. It's a little overgrown. I'm a professional landscaper. I own a landscaping...
That's why I'm asking.
...contract company. And yeah, the whole front yard will be renovated, new sod. We're going to install a sprinkler system, shrubs, and, you know, blooming things. We want it to be a beautiful place. It's kind of my thing, so I like it.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I was asking that.
Yeah.
If you might be planning on something.
Yep.
And in the back, are they going to put a fence up of some kind in case if we do something like that?
It's completely fenced on the west side, the east side, and the north side with the exception of the drive-in area. It's already existing. It's a wood stockade fence. Now, there's a kind of a dilapidated carport that we're going to remove.
You know the issues that have been identified?
Yes.
And I think you addressed some, if not all of them, at the planning commission. But just in summary, can you tell us, how will you deal with the parking issue?
Well, we will have basically a contract. When we have a group of people come, we like to, we're going to have sort of a hostess designated, kind of one point of contact for however many people are going to be in that home at once. And we'll, they'll, they'll have a sizable deposit, and there'll be rules. You know, like, my husband and I stayed in a B&amp;B in Fayetteville over 4th of July, and the parking was very designated. If you don't park in the designated spot, you'll be towed, you know, it's illegal. And we definitely worked and parked where we were supposed to because we didn't want to get towed. So we'll have drawings, we'll have specific instructions on how many cars are allowed. In fact, we are going to suggest that if there's going to be more than six vehicles coming, that we, we're going to partner with the Guthrie Trolley Association so that any extra vehicles can park in the downtown public parking, and we can transport them to the property with the Guthrie trolley and see the sights of Guthrie, get to know the town on the way to the house. I think that would be a really neat experience for our guests. So I think if they're going to be bringing more than six vehicles, which typically, you know, we carpool when people are coming to an event like that, then I think that we can suggest that they park in the public parking downtown. And if not, then they're at their own risk of having their car towed. You know, we don't want anyone to park illegally, that's for sure. And we would have rules concerning noise and, you know, please be respectful of the neighbors. We want to be good neighbors. We don't want to be, you know, a problem.
I think personally you've answered all my concerns.
The issue of not having a management or a resident onsite, that, how do you handle that since you live in Edmund?
Right. Well, with our business model and all the retreats that I've been to and all the ones that are in the State of Oklahoma, because we've either been there or researched them and talked to those people, they don't have people onsite. You get a, like, the one that we typically go to, it's a keypad entry, and everyone will have their own unique, like, it's resettable, so we'd reset it after each group would leave, and a security system, of course. I'm 15 minutes away. I live at Sooner in Danforth, and I'll be available 24/7. But you basically, you know, they check in, they have, you know, the run of the house for the weekend or whatever days that they're there. Some people might be there a week, some people may be there two days, three days, depending on, you know, what they want to book it for. And they're, they're, like I said, it's a sizable investment to rent the whole house. It'll be $2,850 a weekend. Then they'll have to put a sizable deposit up. They'll be liable for any damages, repairs. So it's sort of a different demographic. It's people with expendable income who have the ability to spend $3,000 a month or a weekend to get away and to work on their projects.
When you've been at some of these retreats, have you ever experienced especially the quilters getting out of hand or being rowdy? I'm a quilter.
No. Now, I can say that sometimes, you know, we'll sit on the front porch and chit-chat, but the, I don't drink at 'em.
No.
I mean, and I'm no angel. I mean, I don't have anything against, I don't have anything against drinking, but that's not, I'm not going to pay a lot of money to go get drunk somewhere and not work on a quilt.
Exactly.
I mean, I'm a pretty passionate quilter.
Me too.
And I have a 13-year-old and a nine-year-old daughter, and I don't have a lot of time to get any quilting done at home. I own a business, my husband owns a business, our kids are involved, and so I actually have to go away to get, to get my quilting done. So, I mean, that's not what I'm going to do. I'm not going to waste that kind of money and time.
Thank you.
Are you going to have any like outdoor lighting? In other words, like, some of the concerns are that if somebody flipped a switch on it, it'd just flood the whole area of light.
Oh, no, no, uh-uh, no. I'm a, I'm a big proponent of controlling light pollution in my urban, you know, design background. I hate light pollution. I think it's ridiculous, light pollution. I mean, I don't want a non-safe area. I mean, I would provide enough lighting to be safe but not to light up the world. I mean, there's not going to be any like, I mean, the backyard's just going to be parking, so that's not really going to be like a hangout spot. People are going to be on the third floor in the crafting, you know, place. That's where really they're going to spend most of their time.
Ms. Satterly, you're aware of the objections?
Yes, mostly parking and parking in the alley and noise.
Have you done anything to try to get with these people in this neighborhood and try to resolve those issues so that they're more comfortable with you being there?
I haven't, because I was honestly really shocked at what happened at the planning...
Have they approached you and tried to do the same?
No, they haven't. And in fact, things got a little more hostile than I was comfortable with after the meeting, so I just haven't.
How would you address the noise, especially as it pertains to the proximity to the houses, to the east and the porch you mentioned?
Mm-hmm.
You mentioned the porch in your comment.
Yeah, it's a great porch, and I can see people spending time out there. The only thing I can say to address that is that we want to be good neighbors, and we want the people that are staying in the home to be respectful, and that will be in our rules. If there's a complaint, it'll be dealt with. You know, I don't, I don't want rowdy people there. I mean, we're making a sizable investment in it, and I don't want those, you know, I don't want those kind of people there. So, I mean, we'll have quiet hours, we'll require that they be respectful of the neighbors. I can hope that going forward that we'll have an amicable relationship with our neighbors. We want to be great neighbors, we want to be an asset to the community, and I'm totally open and willing to solve any problems with anyone.
I would just like to point out on noise, we have a noise ordinance to deal with those problems.
So what makes this particular property so attractive in Guthrie, America, to you?
The neighborhood is beautiful. It's proximity to the highway. It's not on a super-busy street, so it's quiet, which is kind of what our guests would want, is a quiet, restorative place. It's close enough to, you know, Tulsa or Oklahoma City or Edmund or Enid, where it would bring people, but not so far that it would discourage people from having a place to work on their scrapbooking and quilting. The house is beautiful. It was built in 1894. It's original woodwork, it's original library doors. It's in great condition. We've had, you know, structural engineers look at it. They don't build houses like that anymore. And we've just kind of fallen in love with it. It's got the original door hardware. And the third floor really lends itself to what we're wanting to do. It's a thousand-square-foot third floor, one open space, so it'll be a very open, creative, social space for our guests. A lot of the crafting places have, like, converted garages, or they have crafting tables set up in the living room and the dining room. The way that this house is set up, we could have the bottom floor be just like any other living room, with the living room and a really great dining room, and it would be more of a home feeling, and people wouldn't be crammed in these odd-shaped rooms. And the second floor, there's four beautiful big bedrooms with hardwood floors and amazing windows, so that would be where people would sleep. And then the third floor is where the crafting would be done. So the architecture of the home and the layout, it's just, it's perfect for what we're wanting to do.
And in other properties that you've seen, this is unique?
It is.
These aspects are unique?
It's very unique.
What you've seen?
And, and we want to be in Guthrie. I mean, we're not looking in any other city. Guthrie's really the place that we want to be. It's out of town, so it's more of a getaway for people coming from, say, Oklahoma City. But it's, Guthrie kind of feels like home. Like I said, I used to work in Guthrie, my husband and I got married here. We just love Guthrie. We love the history of it. The architecture of the downtown is great. I mean, I have a lot of friends who live in Guthrie, and they're wonderful people.
So how many people would you allow there in one evening?
12 or less.
So if I wanted to have 12 people there for a weekend, a long weekend, are you going to mandate what I can and can't do? Is there going to be a rule factor of what I can and can't do?
Well, as long as you would follow our guidelines, you know...
It won't be quilting.
Noise. I mean, let's say that you and 10 of your friends want to get away from your wives for the weekend and watch a football game.
Right.
That's fine. But we just ask that you are respectful of the neighbors, and, you know, we're going to lock the door when you leave, take the trash out, it goes here, you don't leave food in the fridge. I mean, we're going to have a pretty, you know, this is what you need to do before checkout kind of list. And don't destroy the place, or, you know, you'll be liable for that.
Right. So if I wanted to have a two-day party, that wouldn't be a problem?
Well, I mean, if you're, if you are, want to respect the neighbors, I mean, we're going to explicitly say no excessive drinking, no loud parties.
But I don't, I just have 10 buddies, and we're coming to the house, and we're going to have a party.
I would probably discourage that. And the only thing that I could...
So you'd just allow that, or you would allow that?
I wouldn't. What do you mean by would I allow it?
Would you rent it to me?
Are you going to tell me?
Yes.
I'm going to have a raucous party?
I didn't say a raucous party.
Right.
But that's what the way they turn into, raucous parties.
Well...
But I'm just going to tell you that me and 10 buddies want to come and have a football weekend at the house. That's all I'm going to say.
Then I would probably interview you on the phone and try to deduce what type activities would be going on.
So I'm going to be able to rent the house and have a two-day party is bottom line?
Not necessarily.
Not once the cops are called.
Once the cops are called, exactly. Once the cops are called, for that night, it's over.
Yeah.
Right? But doesn't it start again the next day? We've been, I've been there.
Well, I would hope that I would be notified by the police if they were called to the house. I don't know how that works.
So if that was the case, would you...
And I would immediately probably ask you to leave the premises.
Obviously.
And that would be lined out in the contract prior to leasing you the property.
In the last couple of days, I've had no less than 40 text messages, calls, emails, people concerned about this. It bothers me that the two parties involved in this haven't got together, that you guys haven't sat down and talked and tried to resolve the issues, you know? And I think that needs to happen, because I think the crowd will diminish immediately as soon as you guys sit down and talk and figure out a way around this. For us to make a decision on this tonight, is to decide to get one party against the other, and I think what you're trying to do is a great thing, I really do. I'm all for bed and breakfast, I'm, well, for any kind of economic development in our community, I'm all for that. The neighborhood is unanimously against this. And that puts, there's a lot of weight on my decision right there. And I would like to see this continued, Mr. Mayor, and let these people sit down and talk together and see what they can resolve. Maybe you can come up with a solution, and us not to have to be the bad guy. I don't mind... I mean, I don't mind being the bad guy.
Sure.
But I don't want to be the bad guy when, when we haven't gone through the proper steps to, to eliminate the problem. That's what I'd like to see happen. And I would make that a motion if we can do that.
It's not appropriate for a motion at this time.
Not on the agenda, no.
Well, I don't want to tell you how to do your business, but that's my job. If someone wants to move to continue an item and gets a second, it would be proper, but it'd have to get a second, and then it'd have to be unanimously approved, otherwise it's on the agenda tonight to make a decision to approve or disapprove of the special use permit.
I mean, their complaint about the parking has been addressed. We've had the city engineer sign off on the parking plan. My...
That plus the rules that you talked about in the remote parking, if I recall?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, we want to be good neighbors. I mean, I don't want to be friends with, with everyone, and I don't have a problem with anyone. I understand that change is hard for people, I do. There are currently two other Bed and Breakfasts in operation. They've been in operation for quite some time. And, you know, I heard the issue, they're worried about property values, which I addressed at the, at the zoning commission. Bed and Breakfasts generally boost the property values. You know, I looked at the assessors page, and it's my understanding that the Seeley House and the White Peacock have been in and out of operation since 1993. And every single person, you said that you had unanimous opposition to this, every single person in the 700 block of Warner and Manser purchased their home after 1993. There were two Bed and Breakfasts currently in operation in that area. So I think that if there was a lot of concern about them not being surrounded by Bed and Breakfasts, or having Bed and Breakfasts in their neighborhood, why did they choose to buy in the 700 block of Manser and Warner Avenue?
I, I could add one more thing to that. I think that Mr. Case and Mr. Bothroyd might be trying to find out if you intend to turn it into a party house at some point in time. I agree with them, I would not want 10, 12 guys next door to me watching a football game, because I think they could get pretty loud.
Yeah, and...
But if you're keeping it as a retreat for strictly craft-type things, I think that some objection that they've brought up, and I agree with them, would be overruled, that it wouldn't even be, it would be like a moot point at that point in time.
Right, and that's not our demographic.
But if you, but if you would say, well, I would interview them, or I would agree to rent them if they were just going to watch a football game, I think that's contention.
Well, I mean, I'm not an attorney, is it illegal for me to say, because you're a group of men, I don't want to rent to you? I mean, it's like a catch-22. I mean, do I want 10 gigantic beer-swallowing dudes partying in this house that I have $300,000 in? No, I don't.
You don't necessarily want that, but if it's open this weekend, and I'm there with $3,500 bucks to rent the thing, you're probably going to rent it to me. You're not going to be able to mandate, we cannot mandate that you only use this for a quilting retreat.
Right.
We can't, that's one thing I do know, we can't.
No.
Okay, so if we approve this thing, sky's the limit, you do whatever you want. I mean, that's just the bottom line.
Well...
And then we have to, we have to hope that you hold to your quilting deal.
Yeah, I mean, every quilting retreat in the state of Oklahoma is booked out through the, through 2018. I mean, my banker thought I was insane when I brought in this idea. He's like, what? And we showed him the market research. Well, that's one of the reasons why we're opening one, is because we can't even book one. They're booked out for years at a time. So do I want it to be available so that you can rent it? No, I want it to be booked out, I want it to be booked out 46 weeks a year, because I want to book it the other six weeks for myself and my own friends to go to. I don't see the likelihood of, after being open a year, that we have any open weekends.
I, I would like to hear from some of the others for a little bit and then come back.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
We are, have you told us every, everything that, as to why you want this location?
I'm sure there'll be other issues that come up that I can speak to, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Okay, all right.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Satterley. Is there anybody else that would want to speak in favor of this, and then we will let the, those, the, that want to speak against this, this zoning change? Is there anybody else who wants to speak? Mr. Good, five minutes, max?
You've already talked.
Set the timer, set the timer.
The clock is ticking up here on seven chairs.
Good evening. Well, I'm Gary Good, and I'm a resident of Guthrie downtown. And before I say anything at all, I want to say I respect neighbors, and I have friends in that neighborhood. And if I owned a home, I would want the opportunity to look into whatever might happen in my neighborhood, and I'd want the opportunity to get in front of you guys and, and make my case. I have examined the street, I've, I've been over and, and looked at it. I, I have a Bed and Breakfast. I have a sweet Betty Jean that's right by the corner over here, and I've had it for nine years now. I also have a retreat, it's called the Magnolia Manor, and it's on the far west end of downtown, between Oklahoma and Cleveland. The manor has five bedrooms, it's 3,700 square feet. We've been in operation for eight years, we're permitted by the city, we have neighbors on one side of us, and, and then I live on the other side of us, and nobody inhabits that building. It, it operates exactly the way that she is going to operate hers. We have keypads. If I happen to be out of town and somebody is booked for that weekend, I give them the new code for the weekend, they go in, the, the charges have already been arranged, the agreement's already been signed. And in the nine years that I've been here, I've never had one issue, I've never had one complaint of any of the groups. And if there's football going on, they might be watching it, but so do other people in neighborhoods. Have you ever had a football party at your house? There's nothing wrong with it. You know, when I was growing up, I had my set of drums in my bedroom, we had two dogs, and I had a lot of friends over, and we weren't very quiet. We had lots of cars buzzing in and out. Now, I loved my dogs, and I loved my drums, and, but I can tell you right now, these quilters are going to be a lot quieter than an average family. I just want to say that I don't think this will be a negative for anybody, I think it'll be a, a very good thing for Guthrie. Somebody wants to come to our town, beautify a place, and take really good care of it, and put us on the map more than we are now. I just think it would be a real, a real good thing for our town. Regarding the parking and regarding any kind of other issues, I've been around here long enough to know that when issues happen, they get taken care of, because I've had a few. It wasn't me making the noise, but, you know, it, we have things in line to deal with that. And so I just want to say, oh, yes.
One minute.
That's all? Well, I'm actually finished. I just wanted to say that I think it would be a really good thing for Guthrie, and, and I, I do respect and honor the neighborhood and the neighbors, and, and appreciate that they have concern. I just wanted to share my experience with my properties. Thank you.
Gary, before you go, Gary, I have, I've had a lot of people call me, probably everybody in the neighborhood, and one of the big concerns continually is something that you're not up against, because you live right next to it. And that was one of the main concerns that I heard as well, is that the people that are buying this don't live right next to it, and is on the contrary, that, in talking to these people, and I've asked them, questioned them, big time on it, would it make a difference if that person was living right next to it, and it would make a difference?
Well, let me, let me point out one thing in my last 20 seconds. Last weekend, I stayed at Pembroke Cottage, because my place was all booked. Twice, I've stayed at Keepsake Cottage. They do not live there. They don't live within walking distance. Well, they live not too far, but they don't live next door, they don't live on property. Keepsake Cottage is a wonderful place, it's beautiful, and it's a great part of the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Good.
Thank you.
Mr. Charm, did you have your hand up?
I did. Do I have to give you my address?
You've got five minutes.
Thank you. I've been a community advocate for 25 years, not just for the people in these communities, but for the community itself. I've also, for these 25 years, been a capacity builder, to help the people who live in these communities help develop the community themselves. So in the 10 years, nearly 11 now, that Neighborhood Solution has been part of Guthrie, we have, I think we have encouraged many, many families that live in these neighborhoods to clean up, to talk to neighbors, to paint their own homes. We, we do a lot of housing. We've brought an awful lot of homeowners into Guthrie. And even better than that, if we have a rundown house on the street, it's someone who can't afford to fix it, we provide materials for those, those families. So I would say just one thing. You can't control who buys the house next door. You just can't. You can make an effort to get along with them, and the person who's going to move in must agree and make an effort to get along next door. But what I will say, in all the years that I have tried to develop neighborhoods, and that usually starts with one person, working on one house, and then it continues to grow. Over those years, if I could have found a Bed and Breakfast that would have come in and set up in one of those neighborhoods, I would have considered that a huge score because of the way they're maintained, and because most of them do have specific projects that go into them. Some are romantic, some are for honeymoons. In this case, it's for quilting. And I don't think you're going to see your buddies. I don't think your buddies are going to get in over here, because part of, of this owner's obligation is to screen the people that come in. She has every right to do that, and I think if it were me, I would hear 11 guys or 12 coming in for a football game, and I would, even if I could say I banned the beer, I know you'd bring it in anyway. And I think she knows that, too. I have another minute, right?
One minute.
Yeah. So I would have to say that this is absolutely good for Guthrie. It's good for that neighborhood. I've driven around the neighborhood. Some of the homes around it could use a lot of cleaning up and getting the trash and, and junk out of their own backyards. So I think, and also, I saw other neighbors parked in that alley. So, you know, I think, too, that maybe we shouldn't throw stones if we live in glass houses. Time up?
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charm. Was there anybody else? Mr., Mr. Long? Five minutes?
All right, I can do that really quick. I did prepare just kind of a map, so you can kind of see the dots are reflective of where Bed and Breakfasts currently are within the community, and then I put an X where this subject place is. And I also prepared just a quick Google search. If you Google Bed and Breakfast Capital of Oklahoma, on the first page, only Guthrie listings come up, and on the second page, everything except the last three ads aren't Guthrie, and only one true search is not Guthrie. All the remaining entries on the Google search on page two are even Guthrie. So I've got that, too. I think the fact that you've got this couple here that is, is wanting to do things on the up and up speaks volumes for their character and the type of person they are, and what type of business they want to run. All too often, to speak to the, the nine guys or 10 buddies checking into a home, I actually have nine guys that we go to Charleston, South Carolina every year, and we always rent the same 3,700-square-foot house through Airbnb. No one is there. We're given a keypad with entry, and we go every year for golfing and to fish. We do intercoastal fishing and, and golf. And it's the same 10 guys, we've been going now for right at five, maybe six years. So the fact that you may have guys checking into a place, absolutely, you may, but I can guarantee you that the money that we invest and what we're there for, we're not, we're not trashing the place. When you talk about noise, Gary Good made a, a great statement, is that a family is going to live there 24/7, and this is a large home, it is a family-sized home, so you're going to have kids. So the chances are you, of you having a neighbor that has a kid that's interested in band, that's learning to play an instrument, is going to be, be there, and is going to be much louder than any quilter or anybody sitting on the front porch that may be engaging in a, in a glass of wine in the evening. So I think for the perspective of noise, you're going to have a lot less noise than you ever would if you actually had a family move in. I think from the perspective that we are known, and we put ourselves out there, we advertise ourselves as the Bed and Breakfast Capital of the world, and then to say we don't want one in our community isn't a good business for Guthrie. And I think also the fact that the city staff has reviewed it, and they recommended it to the, to my understanding, recommended it to the Planning Commission, and then the Planning Commission unanimously approved it and recommends it to you guys, also speaks volumes, too, of what research we've already done into it as, as, as a city. And then for you guys to then come back and say no, really says a lot, I think, to other people that are looking to come into this community. We want to welcome people, we want to continue to grow and develop as a, as a better community. And I think if we, if we try to, if we continue to say no to things, then we're not, we're not going to experience that growth that's needed. So I hope that, I hope that you guys see that the plan here for this home is amazing, and the fact that they're looking to invest, invest an additional $117,000 into this property is absolutely amazing. The home is gorgeous. I've had, I mean, I'll, full disclosure, on the listing agent on the property, I've had other contracts, they've all fallen through. And the number one reason, primarily, I would say, I mean, there've all been different reasons, some have been financing and, and other things, but when someone comes and looks at this home, they love the home for what it has to offer, but they also see that it does need some additional, additional needs, has additional work that's needed, and they're willing to put that work in. And so I think that it's important to see that the neighbor that they're getting is someone that's going to not only just buy the home and not just live in it for what it is, but they're buying the home to invest in the home and make it grand, and make it a great property, and something that's going to continue to boost the street curb appeal for the neighbors. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. I believe there was somebody else speaking for?
My name's Betty Fries, and I live at 419 Pembroke Lane, and I'm owner of Pembroke Cottage. And we have two cottages on Pembroke Lane that we run as a B&amp;B. And I lived next to, door to Pembroke Cottage when it was owned by somebody else, and it was being operated as a B&amp;B. And Mike and Wanda Fairless originally started it as a B&amp;B, and they lived in Edmund, and they ran it for about four years. And we bought it from them about five years ago, and we've never had the police out for any of our guests. And between the two houses, we can have 10 or 12 guests, and a lot of times, it's family reunions, or couples getting away. Our guests are usually repeat guests, a lot of guests from families that live in Texas and Kansas, and they meet in Guthrie. So I'm just saying, we bought our B&amp;B from someone that lived in Edmund and started a B&amp;B here, and there was no problem. The police have never been called out to our area, except for our neighbor's dog, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I went a little bit out of, out of turn here. I actually should have asked for staff comments initially. I'm going to conclude that now before... I'm gonna conclude that now before we hear from those in opposition to this recommendation.
City Planner Rebecca Blaine will make some remarks, and then I may have some additional remarks once she gets finished.
Good evening. So, in our zoning ordinance, when we reviewed this, bed and breakfasts are allowed as a permitted use in R2, and then as an SUP, a special use permitted on review in R1. We have, of course, I've gotten the flyer that says that Guthrie is the bed and breakfast capital of Oklahoma. With that flyer, I researched the addresses and looked at how many do we currently have in operation that are in the R1 zoning? And I came up with four. And so, those are what are currently in R1 zoning, and I have those here for you. I have Pembroke Cottage, which is the lady that just spoke, Prairie City Lodge, Stone Lion Inn, and Railroad House B&amp;B. So, those are what we currently have for R1. Also, they're in your packet, and I'm sorry, it is a lengthy packet for this item. It talks about the things that we look at to review that, and what should be taken into consideration. And absolutely, the neighbors around there, and those concerns should definitely be addressed and taken into consideration. The other things, let me go to that. Some of the other things that should be looked at, one was parking, which by ordinance, we had, let me flip to that page. We had that they would basically be under boarding house, and that they would require one parking space per two guests. So, that's the six parking spaces which they proposed, and the parking plan does meet that requirement. And the city engineer, Bill Myers, did review and approve the proposed parking plan that she provided. And then, as far as some of the complaints that were addressed in the letter from the neighbors with the noise, obviously, if anyone, whether it's a guest or an owner, you know, is loud after hours, everyone has the right to call the police. I think that's something that could be defined differently, depending on who's there or what kind of noise it is. Let me, let me just flip through. Okay. So, other things to be considered. The location area, you know, they're dealing with existing construction. They do have very slim side yard setbacks, but those are, you know, existing conditions, not something that we can really modify at this point. The parking spaces were met. And of course, ingress and egress is going to be through the alleyway, because these homes in the period they were built, they don't have traditional straight-facing driveways. So, that was looked at. And then, of course, disposal of garbage and trash, that will probably produce the same as a single-family home use would, so that would be similar. I believe she did address landscaping and some of the interior investments that they planned on spending the $117,000 for. And then just maintenance. As James said, and from my Google search, the home has been on the market at least two years, so it has not had a buyer or a successful applicant as a potential buyer that would go through, for whatever reason. And here we have someone that not only wants to purchase this property in lovely Guthrie, but they actually want to sink a sizable investment to make it beautiful. And so, those are the things that we looked at when we reviewed this application. And I'll let Leroy add to that if he has anything else.
Okay.
Thank you.
First, I hope that the residents of the neighborhood and the individuals applying for this, staff has tried to provide guidance to everybody and explain the process to everybody that come to our office. And so, hopefully, we've been helpful to both sides of this issue as far as sharing information. We tried to be diligent to make sure when we put the agenda packet together last Friday that we had everything that everybody brought to us in your packet, so that you would have a complete packet from both sides of the issue. Just a little background to start with, of course, in all of rezoning districts, just like the R1 single-family dwelling district, there's two types of uses permitted. One is uses that are permitted as a matter of right, in case of R1, single-family dwelling, church, library. Then the second category is those uses that are permitted, subject to review by the planning commission and city council. These types of uses have to be permitted by a specific or special use permit. Examples for R1, this zoning district, home barbershop, public building, commercial child care center, medical facility, and of course, the issue we're dealing with tonight. In 1987, the city council adopted ordinance number 2811 that added bed and breakfast to the R1 zoning district as a use permitted after review for a special permit. In essence, the governing body was determining by adopting that ordinance that, of course, subject to review of the individual circumstances, that in general, the nature of a bed and breakfast makes it desirable that they be permitted to locate in the R1 zoning district, again, subject to review of each individual case. Further, because there's a limited number of bed and breakfasts throughout the community, it'd be difficult to establish a zoning district specifically for B&amp;Bs. Rebecca talked a little bit about Article 7 in our zoning code, factors to be considered. And there are seven factors that our ordinance tells staff that we're supposed to review when we review this. And I just wanna point out to everybody, from staff's perspective, when we follow the ordinances adopted and look at those seven factors, it should be noted that those guidelines provided to city staff for review of the permit applications does not specifically identify either opposition or support of neighborhood residents as a criteria reviewing such applications. Some individuals have asked, why didn't staff put more weight on the opinion of the neighborhoods? Well, by the ordinance, staff has given a set of guidelines to look at. The amount of weight that the city council gives in evaluating a B&amp;B special use permit application to opposition or support of the neighborhood residents is determined by the governing body, not by staff. I would, however, point out, through case law, there, if zoning decisions are challenged in court, it's generally accepted criteria to be considered when reviewing a rezoning application. It's called the Golding Rules. And I'd point out, number eight, opposition or support of neighborhood residents, this is just one of the factors to be considered, and by itself is not sufficient reason to approve or deny a request. I would also point out, when you look at either support or opposition on this issue, tonight's decision pertains to the zoning question of whether or not the use of the property at 710 East Warner for bed and breakfast is an appropriate use for that specific property. Tonight's decision is not a building code or permit occupancy question. That would be determined by the building code and the code enforcement staff. When they review it for an occupancy permit, they will make sure that it meets, not the new building code, but the code the city has adopted for existing properties. So, example, number of required bedrooms, such items, if deficient, can be addressed by property improvements, but that is a later step in the process under occupancy permit review. Tonight, the decision is, is that property appropriate to be used as a bed and breakfast? Not, does it meet the code? The issues raised by neighborhood residents should be limited to concerns that are specific to the use of the property as a bed and breakfast, not something that could be a general issue that could very well happen if the property was used as a single-family residence. I think we've already had some individuals point out, noise by guests using the front porch, that could be just as applicable to occupancy of a large family in residence. So, that's not unique to a bed and breakfast. The issues raised, either in support or against, should not be speculative in nature. They should be based on sound, reasonable, or documentable situations, such as, but not limited to, problems identified from experience with other neighborhood bed and breakfast. And the weight given to statements, either in opposition or support, should be determined by their merit or soundness in reasoning. I would just throw those out for consideration of guidelines as we entertain this subject.
Okay, all right. Any member of the council have any questions of Rebecca or Leroy? Okay?
No.
Now, we'll turn it over to those that are in opposition. I just would ask, again, that we limit our comments to the five minutes. And I've already spoken to some of you, and hope is that there is a, some major speakers that are going to represent the neighborhood. However, if your particular point of view isn't expressed by them, please feel free to come to the microphone. We will start with Pastor Don, as the issues that you, representing the, you yourself, as well as the neighborhood...
You've got a scary bunch of people. I'm Don Reapy, and I live at 711 East Warner. And we have a really unique neighborhood. And we have vested in that neighborhood, even more than just the property, we've invested in each other as neighbors. And as we have developed that, we have six residents that live in that neighborhood. We have three houses that are empty, and we have one house that it's a rent house. And that's on, that's on to the west of me. We have families that have little kids. And Eve is on the, clear on the west end of the, on the north side, up by Maple. And then we have the house that we're talking about being a bed and breakfast. And then we have Jim Peak at the house just to the east of it. Then we have Lance and his family, and have two little kids and a dog. And then Richard and his wife live on the far east end on the north side. You come on the west, on the south side, Greg and Ellen Beer, that live on that corner. And then the house is being remodeled and up for sale, right next to me on the east side. Then Jody and I, and then the red house, and then the house in the corner is empty. But all six of us that are residents of that neighborhood are opposed to this idea of a bed and breakfast. Because we are a unique neighborhood, we involve ourselves in helping one another. We enjoy grandkids coming, we enjoy the kids in the neighborhood that are there. We just have a uniqueness, and it is a quiet neighborhood. It is a fun neighborhood to be in. And so, we keep our properties up, and not everybody has the money that they're talking about, but we all keep our places up, looking good. I just think that the uniqueness of our neighborhood, I don't wanna see it spoiled. And I think that, I don't care how you look at it, but you're talking about a business moving into a residential area. And one of the things, we had a problem, you guys have had the packet, I don't wanna go through that whole packet with you tonight, because I've only got five minutes, but parking is one. They say that you can park six in the back. I don't believe that, but that's, that I'm not a licensed engineer. But I do know that if there's not, if it's hard to park back there, human nature will be to park somewhere where it's easier to park. We have a uniqueness in our neighborhood, and the fact that was brought up, that there's no driveways in our neighborhood, except for mine. And if you are there during any part of the day, especially the weekends, you see that parking is a real problem there. And so, the fact that they can just park anywhere they want to then, and take up our parking space, well, we've got people that work 12, 14 hours a day. I'm on call 24/7, and I, we don't need, we, when we come home, we wanna decompose. We want it to be a home. We want it to be an atmosphere of families. That's what the neighborhood is about. It's not just about money, it's about the people that live there, and the fellowship that we have with one another, and the camaraderie. And I don't want to see that interrupted. And so, you're asking us to change our lifestyle to accept someone else's lifestyle that's not even gonna live there? And so, I think that, I'm just really asking you from my heart, don't allow this to happen so that our neighborhood can be what it's always been. And so, there's two other bed and breakfasts down the street. Why, how many more do we need in my neighborhood? So, there's a whole community, why can't there be another place they can go to? So, I'm just asking you from the bottom of my heart, just the fact that we are, our neighbors are against this, and we feel like that it's gonna change our lifestyle.
Thank you, Pastor.
Yes.
I got a question for Don.
Yes.
So, I just became aware of, and something that we both became aware of here lately, of a, of another type facility that may be on your street that you may not approve of. And is that what this is about? Is it because of that?
No.
Because I was never aware that, or involved in the permitting of that either.
And I don't know how, I don't know, I don't know how that came about.
It didn't happen.
I don't know how it came about. It came about while I was there.
We're gonna address that, we're gonna address that, but the question is, if that wasn't there, would this be such an issue?
No. I tell you what, we're talking about two different dominos. I'm a minister, and I have spent 49 years in ministry, helping people to understand they have a second chance with God Almighty. The house that's next door to me is a halfway house, it's an Oxford house, it's a ministry, it's not a business. And I am, I'm kinda, I've talked to others...
I don't think we should be going into that.
Okay, I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm a minister, so I have a hard time going one way in the direction of that.
I just, my question was, is that particular facility influenced the decision not to want a bed and breakfast on the street? That's all.
Yeah.
And from your perspective, it does not?
No.
Okay, all right.
Well, from a lot of others I've talked to, it does. So, when they get up here, I'll ask them the same thing.
That's fair, that's fair.
Any other question?
Is there anything that Ms. Satterley could do, or say, or is there any way that you can come up with any kind of a way to agree and work together on this?
I can only speak for myself. I can't speak for my whole neighborhood. But we can talk, and we can see. I don't know, I just don't, I mean, because what we've heard tonight is a little different than what we heard the other night. So, and we haven't had, again, the neighborhood hasn't got to talk, so...
How much different? What do you, what do you mean different than what you heard the other night?
Well, you know, it was, it was just approached different, you know, and I don't, I can't really give you the case in point.
Okay, all right. I think most, probably everybody here looked at, or were, if they weren't in the chamber, they looked at the video of it, so they have a pretty good reflection of what happened at the planning... So they have a pretty good reflection of what happened at the planning commission, if that's what you're referring to. So you're saying things are a little different or presented differently?
Yeah. I mean, more thorough. I think it was more thorough tonight.
Okay, all right.
Does that make you feel better? Or does that make you feel worse? Because...
That's kind of what I'm asking.
I think it makes...
Is there any way for you to find a... find a solution to this?
I'm still... I'm still not comfortable with a business moving into my neighborhood. Because I'd... if I wanted to... if I wanted to stay next to a business, I'd stay at my office. Because I... I want... I don't want to deal with somebody else's business when I'm home. I want to spend it with my family, my grandkids, my neighbors, and that. I don't want to deal with somebody else's business. And if nobody's there, living there, I don't care if she's 10 minutes or 30 minutes away, we will have to deal with it until she gets there or whoever's in charge.
What about if the house has been sitting James for two years, right? So what about if some... what about if... I'll use me for example, okay? Just because I'll be the bad guy on this scenario. What if I bought it and made it a rent house? Is that better than a B and B? And I didn't put a dime in it? What if I bought it as is, shoveled families in and out of it, is a rent house, never did anything to do anything? No paint, barely mowed the yard? Then isn't that worse? I've got to look at both sides of the deal.
I know you do. And so do I. But the thing about it is, what our neighborhood does, if somebody has problems, we help them resolve that problem. I've... we've helped each other mow yards. We've helped people trim trees. You know, we've done all that kind of things to help each other. So that's what we kind of enjoy doing. That's what makes our neighborhood unique.
You can't pick your neighbors.
No, we can't.
And so... but what you risk here is, by a negative decision on this board, is someone doing just what I said.
Yeah.
And buying that house, cheap as they can buy it, and slam people in it till they can't pay the rent anymore, and then filter another family in it to keep doing the same.
Well, I'm...
Potentially.
I may be getting in trouble here, but let me just share an idea. Eve has a different outlook on decorating than I do. She has the idea of the wild flowers in her flowerbed. I don't... I think they look like weeds personally. But you know, that's... but that's the difference between her and I. And that's what...
I'm not a modern wasteful.
But what I'm saying is, but we have... we have accepted that and because we've worked together. You see what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying.
And so whether it's renters or residents, we come together as a neighborhood and help each other and let people have freedom to do their ideas, but we work together as a neighborhood. That's what makes this block so unique.
Don, could I... I have something I want to ask of you. Christie has said that she's a landscape person by education, trade, and family business. I'm assuming that she's very proud of the work that she does, and she would have an extremely well-laid-out landscaped yard. So that would dissolve you having to mow their yard. Then this... now, this is the other thing, and it's personal. I would hate to think that you would not allow seven or eight women like me to spend a weekend quilting. I really... that bothers me because that's the caliber of people that I believe she wants in there.
Okay.
And I'm a quilter, an avid quilter, a knitter. I do crafting things. And to think that I would be turned down because I might be too loud? I'm sorry, I'm offended.
I'm not worried about the quilters. I'm worried about, because it is a business, they've got to keep it rented. And I... and I... nobody can control that. And I mean, she can tell you what she has a desire to do, but when it comes down to it, if they need to rent it, they're going to rent it. And I know she's got an investment in it. And... but we've got an investment in our neighborhood as well.
Yeah, you're not going to... you're not going to let $350,000 or whatever the investment is go unchecked without getting a check.
Well...
As simple as that.
But I am a quilter, and I have gone to retreats. And let me tell you, they are booked up for as many as two and three years.
There you go. That's the big plus on that deal, I think.
Because there's no place else to go.
I hear you.
Okay. Any other questions of Pastor? Okay? I know there's others that want to speak, and...
Thank you, Don.
Who wants to go next? Okay? Please identify yourself and your address, please. And again, you're on a unique perspective, not the continuation of what Pastor's already said.
My name is Phyllis Libby, and I live at 711 East Mansour. I live 31 inches away from a B and B that never had onsite parking, had always parking on the street. I don't know how that got to be allowed because according to what I read on the code, you had to have onsite parking. The people who owned that originally were my first neighbors, and they were lovely people. I didn't own the house that is now 31 inches away from the rent house that they had as part of their B and B. But I had to buy that house. There were three 89ers, and I bought one, redid it. The middle one was a renter that was... I bought from Herzl. And then I had the 31 inches away from everybody who took that house for the weekend. It was pretty tough because I had television, I had arguments, I had sex, I had everything next door, okay? I put up with it because I love my neighbors. I'm a gardener. I have a beautiful yard. People sat on their front step there and on their porch, and they saw what I did, and they loved it, okay? The renters. The third renter that I have now trashed it, and it has been a mess. And I would love to see that when it's sold again, it does not automatically go as a bed and breakfast, that somebody has to really change the property in order to keep it up and to do it. So I have a less and less over time confidence in the town that I came to, to put my roots down in as an artist and as a writer and as a therapist who works internationally and needs to come home to a place that's safe. I'm used to working, ladies and gentlemen, where there are barbed wire fences and AK-47 rifles with security guards out front. Sunday, I go to such a place. It's called San Pedro Sula, Honduras. And that's the kind of work I have to do in that environment to save children who are brain-injured, okay? So I love Guthrie. I love coming home to a town, to a neighborhood where there are no wires across my backyard. There are no AK-47s out front. People have striven to live by their commitments as Americans, as people of faith, whatever it is, okay? And I have this bed and breakfast, which shouldn't be right next door, and now I'm going to have another one behind me. I have the alleyway there. It is almost 20 feet. I have a garage right at the opening of that, across from the opening of that 710 property. I have... we have gas lines. We have AT&amp;T pilings. We have the transformer on the pole right in front of that backyard property. That property has all kinds of issues, and I know what it's like to have issues because I've redone two 89ers, okay? There's a sewage outlet pipe right in the parking area that cannot be... you can't park around it. It's right there. It's an outlet pipe. It's right in the middle. The person who's coming is not going... who's taking it is not going to live there. That's hard for me, okay? Really hard. Because the other bed and breakfasts in the neighborhood have people living onsite. No one does the Sealy House anymore. It's going to go up for sale. It was recently repainted, but not the house next door to it, which is part of the property, okay? I don't begrudge anybody having a B and B, but I don't need three of them within walking distance to my trash containers, okay? I don't need to have people back up, and I got to worry that they're going to clip the back of my garage, okay? I mean, it's... SUVs are bigger vehicles and very heavy vehicles, and it's very hard to back anyway. All of my neighbors have the same issue, and we don't cause problems. But people have come through the alley, even friends of ours, sometimes even our family members, and they banged into some of these utility devices, and that's really a concern to me. I want more... and in terms of my confidence in the city of Guthrie, okay, to discover six weeks ago that there's a drug house around the corner from me, a halfway house, doesn't fill me with confidence because nobody here had anything to do with it. I'm concerned about that. I'm only concerned because I need confidence in you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm not rich, okay? I work hard, and I don't make any money because I work for people who are God's children too, and they are poor. I don't need to get my neighborhood to have lots of businesses come into it because it lifts the neighborhood, but it takes away my neighbors.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to go back to my rental thing. You said that you had two bed and breakfasts next to you, but then one turned into a rental property here at some point in time, right?
No, you had a... I didn't get that. Yes, Betty...
And it is destroyed now.
Yeah, the one rental is White Peacock. That's the only one that abides by all the rules. The other one is the Sealy House, a big two-story house on the corner, and there's a little 89er right next to it that was part of the block originally.
But now it's a rent house, and it's destroyed.
Well, it was rented by the person who had the bed and breakfast.
Okay, but it's not a bed and breakfast. It's a rent house that's destroyed.
It...
But that's what I'm talking about with this other house, okay? That's exactly my point.
Yeah, but it wasn't even a viable house, okay? That's the other thing. It's only a room with a bathroom and a microwave. It's not a house even, okay? But it was for a night to stay that they got passage for that. There's been three owners. The third owner has made a mess of it.
So again, does this halfway house influence your decision on this bed and breakfast?
Well, in the sense that I feel kind of helpless.
So that's yes, or is that a no?
No, that's helpless, okay? I don't know where I stand, all right? And if I have to feel helpless with my experience as it has been, living in situations all over the world with people all the time, I would err on the side of, I'm not so sure this is a great idea because the same Realtor that did the halfway house, without anybody knowing about it, is also handling Ms. Satterley. I think Ms. Satterley should come into Guthrie, but I think Ms. Satterley should do what Sealy with a Kiss did. She bought the building. She has the greatest knit shop in this part of the world, and this is part of that, okay? I'm a knitter, and I appreciate quilting. I think that we should have the business downtown by a building. She's been there for 17 years. She has classes. People come from all over the state and beyond the state for that, okay? And so why not get a property there, put a second story, an elevator in for your 70-year-olds so they could... and have people quilting so that we can sell them, have a museum, have everything, you know? I mean, or do another bed and breakfast. We don't... I can't support another business in my neighborhood.
Thank you very much for your comments. Did you want to make comments? And then James last? Okay, go ahead. Eve?
Good evening. My name is Eve Cushing. I live at 704 East Warner, which is on the corner of Warner and Maple. I have some statements that I want to make, but I also have some feedback from some of the other comments. Mr. Bothroyd, you were mentioning something about rent house. This 710 had been a rental for about five years prior to going on the market and sitting on the market for two years. And I've been living next to it for those five years during which it was a rental. And half of my front yard was used as a thoroughfare. Those renters felt entitled to constantly trespass on my yard, create a big dirt swath. And in fact, in bad weather, I had some of them park in my front yard to get their... to get their car off the street and under the big tree so that it would be safe from hail. So everybody here is talking about what's good for them and not for the residents. This is a residential neighborhood. I am distressed to hear Ms. Satterley's description of the business tonight. It is quite different from what she described at the planning committee meeting, very different. At that meeting, she very specifically said, "This is a scrapbook bed and breakfast for women only, period."
I remember the question being asked if she could... would rent it to someone else, and her response was that she would.
Yeah, yeah, so...
So that's not any different than what she said tonight.
She identified that it wasn't going to be exclusive at the planning commission, I believe.
Not different.
Well, she had described it as a scrapbooking B and B for women only. And it wasn't until I asked the question that night, "Well, what if you have a man who is a scrapbooker? Or what if you have a couple who are non-scrapbookers who want to stay? Or what if you have a bunch of men who want to come and stay? Or what if the guys across the street at the alcohol drug house are tired of 707, and they feel like getting a break from it, and they want to stay in 710 at the B and B?" These are all unsupervised people. The guys across the street are unsupervised. The bed and breakfast is going to be unsupervised. It's supposed to have 24-hour keypad entry, and she's talking about, "Well, you know, if we have a lot of people show up, we'll have remote parking and the trolley. The city trolley can bring people in." Well, is the city trolley open from midnight to 7:00? These people have 24-hour, 365 per day access. It's very upsetting. I agree with John. We want a quiet, restorative neighborhood for us, us, for us, the residents. I want to get into my comments. This is a residential neighborhood. The operative word is residential. And we are comprised of the 700 blocks of East Warner, East Mansour, and the 400 block of North Walnut. And we all reject the forced intrusion of yet another business, this, the proposed B and B at 710 East Warner. And I want to give myself to the three empty houses, too, that are on our street, that we do not want another commercial business squeezed and forced onto these little lots. 710 East Warner is only 48 feet wide, and it has no parking except for the two spots in front of the house. And they're talking about... Ms. Satterley talks about six cars, five across the back. Well, let's see. If it's... if the parking spaces are nine feet wide, that's 45 feet. The lot is 48 feet wide. That only leaves six inches in between the cars and the fences. Nobody can get in and out. It's just not realistic. And as for me personally, I... this is very emotional for me. I lost my house in a divorce in Edmond. I came to Guthrie because I felt safe here. I felt like I could start anew, and it was quiet. And what happens? I am forced to be literally surrounded on four sides by commercial businesses, and it's just not fair. What do I... what am I talking about? To my immediate west, I have the Peacock Inn, and I'm actually okay with that. They're well-established. They're on a big corner lot. They have adequate parking. I'm okay with the Peacock Inn. To my immediate north, I have what Phyllis was talking about next to her, which is 705 and 707 East Mansour, which is the big blue house, which is the bed and breakfast. It's up for sale. It's got a B and B permit, and it does not have parking. Everything's going to be on the street. And it's comprised of two buildings, the big house and then the little house. The little house is only 31 inches away from Phyllis's house, and that's also rented out as, you know, part of the B and B. And then to my immediate...
One more minute.
And then to my immediate east, I have 710 East Warner, which wants to become a bed and breakfast. And it has inadequate parking and the intrusive proximity of being only 13 and a half feet away from the Peak's house, which is 714. 13 and 1/2 feet away from the Peaks House, which is 714. And then to my immediate south, I have 707 East Warner, which is the drug and alcohol halfway house for transient men. This is not what I signed up for. I felt very lucky when I became the current owner of my historic house at 704 East Warner. I invested in what I understood was a strictly residential neighborhood since 1894. So after 123 years, I have every reason to believe, or had every reason to believe, that it was going to remain so. I'd like to quote Supreme Court Justice William O. Douglas. He said, "The purpose of single-family zoning is to preserve residential areas where families and youth and their values and the blessings of neighborhood and quiet and privacy and respite from the constant hustle and bustle of commercial business make the area a sanctuary, our sanctuary, not for other people to get away. It's our sanctuary."
Please wrap up your comments.
And I have just a couple more things I'd like to say. Justice Douglas also said, "It is imperative that city planners remain mindful of the economic rationale," and that being the preservation of our property values. I think that if people knew that we had four businesses in this neighborhood, I don't think people would want to move in to this neighborhood. It's a residential neighborhood. In closing, I really feel like it's incumbent upon the Guthrie City Council to protect us as residents and our residential areas from the repeated targeting and forced unraveling of our residential neighborhood by people who see an empty house as an opportunity to insert a business, ignoring residential zoning and not having the courtesy to even seek our opinions. We were never approached about this, and, you know, they dismissed the negative impacts on us, and they just kind of ruthlessly insert another business. This is unfair, and it's an unnecessary infringement on the constitutional rights of the residents, us, in these challenged residential households.
Thank you very much.
I got a question. Is the halfway house influencing your decision here on this deal?
All I know is that I am surrounded by four businesses.
Yeah, but forget those. Is the halfway house influencing your decision on this deal?
On the bed and breakfast?
On...yes.
No. I don't...I don't want a bed and breakfast on three sides of me.
Okay.
I just don't.
But you don't have a problem with the Peacock up the road? See, I get new information all the time when I...the more that things go on. The Peacock is just great. That's fine. The Peacock can be there.
Well, they are well-established, and they also...there's a big buffer in between me and the Peacock because there's an empty lot.
There's a buffer there, I understand. So, but now you had...you lived next to 710 for five years when it was a rent house.
And it was not pleasant.
Exactly. People trudging through your yard and everything else. You have an opportunity to potentially go back to that, okay? If this deal doesn't work out, because somebody's gonna buy the home. It's not gonna sit there much longer, especially with everybody knowing that it's there now.
We would love...we have...we have three empty houses on our...
I'm just saying. Wouldn't you rather have...again, I have a lot of empathy for you, Eve. I swear to God I do, okay? And I feel your pain. But wouldn't you rather have someone there that's gonna invest 300, 400 grand in total? I don't even know what it is. What's the house, a couple hundred grand? You know, you put another 150 in it, another 120? Have 320, 330, 340 in it when it's said and done?
I would love...
Or do you want someone to buy it for 149 and slam renters back in it and let them trudge through your property again? Because that's what's gonna happen.
I would...I would love to have a family in there. I don't want a business next to me. I don't want a commercial business. I've got...I've got a commercial business on all four sides of me.
But if someone buys it and makes it a rental property, it's gonna be a heck of a lot worse than a B&amp;B.
And we have no say if they turn it into a rental property.
And then we have no say what they do.
Well, I'm aware of that, and I'm not saying that all of the renters in those five years were bad. I mean, the last bunch regularly used my yard as a thoroughfare, but, you know, some are better than others.
And this theory...I got one other thing. This theory about, "Well, the parking's not gonna work out in the back." Who cares? Well, I mean, that's not...whose concern is that? That's her concern, to make sure that that works out in the back, because it's not gonna be allowed on the street. Is that right? Am I accurate in that?
I think that there are two vehicles on the street.
The rest are in the back, and PD's gonna go out there and make sure that that's enforced. So this thing about...I don't...and again, I have so much empathy for you guys, it makes my heart bleed, okay? It really, truly does, I swear, okay? But what business is that, is anybody's, where they're gonna park? As long as there's only two on the front street, then what's the problem?
Well, it's a very narrow alley, and Phyllis...
Again.
Phyllis has a wheelchair-bound person living with her. Emsa actually had to come recently to get that person. The only way they can get to that person is through the alley.
But they're not gonna be parked in the alley. They're gonna be parked in the yard, right?
In the backyard is what I believe she said, Ms. Satterley said.
Have Joe...you know, I'd like to hear from planning a little bit on this maybe as well before we wrap up just a little bit.
Well, I think we'll give her another chance. Okay. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Mary Beth, you have a different perspective?
Yes, I do. Because I'm unaffected about that street. I live on the block, but I live...
Okay, wait till you get to the mic and then identify yourself...
I always start talking.
And what your...and what your address is.
Mary Beth Craven, 415 North Walnut. And when we had the planning commission meeting, I stood up and said...well, I didn't speak quite as well as I am now, and I said, "We need to communicate. You all haven't communicated. We haven't communicated. It's like Congress."
And I think that that...Jim's thing right at the beginning, I think, is solid.
Yeah, that was a very...
I think that where everybody needs to sit down.
Well, and if they had had an open house, and maybe they still can, and you all can go, I think everyone needs to understand it, and I don't think we do. I'd like for them to go to the blue and white house because it's got plenty of room around it. But if they'd have an open house and all of the neighbors could see, because it sounds like you're gonna approve it, it might help. But I think you've got to communicate, and they're not. And that's why I'm up here with my tremly voice. I used to be able to talk like a mayor.
But you agree that it goes both ways. Neither party has attempted any communication.
No. I went up...I've talked to the planning commission people.
Don't agree with what?
I've talked to the Realtor. I gave a card to the Satterley group, and I gave a card to another group, and I said, "I'll be happy to act as a liaison."
Yes. So...
I hear from them.
So you identify a problem that is in all facets of our life. Lack of communication.
Yes.
And it's the foundation of building relationships, and I think we're...we have seen a fractured relationship, unfortunately, because...
But it's also made...
Because I'm hearing...I'm hearing that Ms. Satterley wants to be a good neighbor. I'm hearing that she values in her proposed use of the building the same thing that the neighborhoods do, quiet, a beautiful neighborhood, a progressive neighborhood, one that helps each other. I'm hearing everybody's saying the same thing.
But they're not doing it.
Well, but here's another thing, too, okay? If down the road...she puts the money into the house, and then down the road she decides that she wants out of the B&amp;B business for whatever reason. I don't know why. Maybe quilting goes away or goes somewhere else, who knows? Okay? And she sells the home, it's very unlikely it's gonna be sold to someone to make it a rental property. Very unlikely, okay? And as it stands right now, I'm going back hardcore on this rental property thing because that's something that was left out of everybody's conversation that contacted me, that that house has been sitting for two years and it was a rent house for five. That's a huge fact that was left out of our conversations.
But the other thing is, most of the people are not opposed to any bed and breakfast. It's this one because of the closeness, and if you go look at it, you'd see how close it is to the other houses, and the alley is not really drivable sometimes. So there's a lot of issues there, but I do think...
It's a very congested street as well, so I've seen that myself.
But I'm glad you said that, Jim, because we're not communicating.
Okay.
But an open house, so everybody could see it, would begin opening doors and voices and minds. Thank you.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. James?
Mr. Mayor, I think everybody's covered everything.
Please get up to the mic and introduce yourself and identify your address.
My name is Jimmy Peak. I live directly east, 714 East Warner. All of my concerns are the same as everybody else's. Everybody has spoke to what they think is gonna happen, but nobody knows what's really gonna happen. I mean, she may have rules, and hopefully everybody will follow them, but rules are just rules. The city doesn't have any regulations governing B&amp;Bs that I'm aware of. I really feel like this is a poor location, not a poor house, and I'm not opposed to bed and breakfast in general, but the bad location is the fact that it's on a 50-foot-wide lot, and it's so close to the other houses, and especially mine, 13 feet. That's unacceptable to me. I don't know if I can add anything to that other than...
Any questions of Mr. Peak?
Well, I have a question, and I...this is something that concerns me as a family member. What if a family of five or six purchased that home, and you had two boys and two girls under the age of 10, and they like to play on the porch because mom could keep track of them until dark? Or they had a jungle gym and a trampoline and all these things in the backyard? What...are you all gonna run them out of town, or are you gonna allow them to live there?
Well, that's a possibility. I mean, the neighbors to the east of me have young children and a little dog, and...
They could be noisy.
I'm pretty partial to kids.
Or you...well, they could be a lot noisier than old ladies.
I have a lot of grandkids, and my wife will tell you, I love kids. I love all of them.
So how have the renters been over the last five years? You live right next to it.
The renters? I never really had any problems with the renters. The people that actually lived in the house before that, that own it, and maybe own it still and did own it, I had some problems with them, but...and not directly with them, but when they lived there, the only actual police problems that I've seen in that neighborhood were when they lived there, and that was because somebody would come up and down the streets and break into all the cars, and once they moved away, that disappeared.
Okay.
With the exception of parking, the only discussion of the arguments that I've heard up until now, none of those other topics have come up. And one of the things that I see here is that if you've got three vacant houses on your block, anything can happen in a vacant house. That could be a drug house. People could be in there cooking meth. Any number of things can happen in a vacant house. So to me, your neighborhood is much more secure if those homes are occupied. This lady's not just gonna occupy it. She's gonna sink another $120,000 into it to fix it up and make it nicer, which automatically is gonna increase your home values and Dawn's home values and Eve's home values and everybody else's home values on the block.
So you say.
Well, versus renters in there.
Well, I mean, the comps that James uses whenever he values a home, that's gonna be one of them now.
Well, it's not a home anymore. It's business.
It's still a residential home. If it...it's still a comp.
They have to have a special permit.
No, no, don't...it's still a comp. It's still a comparative that they're gonna use.
Will it be a comp, James?
When they...
Okay.
When they value your house, they're gonna use that as a comparative, because it was sold for $215,000 or $250,000, and then when she sells it, hopefully she's gonna get $350,000 out of it to cover her costs. So all of that is gonna help to increase the value of your home. She's not...you know, I've talked to you. I've talked to almost everybody in this room, and everything that I've heard up until now, the whole story that I'm hearing now is different than what I heard on the phone talking to all of you guys, you know, as far as...
Do you think that when we spoke, I misled you?
No, 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 no. You told me what you believed to be true, and it's like I've talked to another guy that's in here tonight, and perception's reality. You perceive that this is gonna be a bad thing for your neighborhood, so that's your reality.
Yes.
Okay. And for me, as representative of you, I mean, I'm trying everything I know how to get you guys to come together, to get you guys to talk this over and try to find a way to resolve this so that we don't have to be the bad guys, because I'm gonna have to be a bad guy to one of you guys. And if you just sat down and talked about it, it might not happen.
Somebody that lives here.
Excuse me?
I said, "I hope that would be to a non-resident, not to someone that lives here."
Well, I don't know...
I've been here 22 years, you know? I mean, I...
I don't know. What are they gonna do with...
She doesn't even plan to live in this neighborhood.
All right, so let me ask you this. The house has been on the market two years. Nobody in it.
Right.
James, what are they gonna do with the house if they don't sell it?
Drop the price.
Seriously?
Do the time that's on the market. I mean, they can't allow it, so it will turn into a rental.
Okay. So by us letting that house turn into a rental, it personally does not do you a justice. So look at it on that side of the coin, too. If we allow that house to turn back to a rental versus this B&amp;B, that does you more harm than good. The B&amp;B comes in with a $350,000 end game. I mean, how can that not be a bonus?
Okay. When I spoke to you guys earlier, you kind of agreed with me, I think, that it was a bad idea, okay? And I think the reason is the same one that you would have if a bed and breakfast was gonna come into your neighborhood. Let's say you lived on 50-foot-wide lots, have no idea where you lived. Let's say you lived on a 50-foot-wide lot, and the neighbors next door to you did the same thing. If you go to try to sell that property, you may say that it's gonna be a higher in value or it's gonna be a comp, which is not very likely. I live in a house that's less than 1,500 square foot. That's almost a 4,000-square-foot house. There's not a comp.
When you and I talked, I didn't remember exactly when it was. I was heading to Lake to winterize boats.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay? And on that particular conversation, I have a lot more information now than I did then.
Well, I would hope so.
And the information that I have now is that I didn't have then, is that the house...nobody told me the house has been on the market two years. Nobody told me the house has been a rent house for five years, okay? That's a huge amount of information that I never had personally.
And I thought that was important. I would've been happy to disclose that. I wasn't trying to hide that. I didn't say you were.
I don't think you were.
I don't...no, no, absolutely not.
I didn't think it was important, and I still don't.
All right. Anybody else have any questions to Mr. Peak? 30 seconds.
The big problem with the house being a B&amp;B is that it's nothing but strangers, strangers, strangers. If it's a rent house, at least we know these people, but we're gonna have strangers every single day of the week, and we've got three B&amp;Bs around us. It's a case of having strangers in our neighborhood all the time.
Okay, thank you. I believe one of the councilmen wanted a question from staff. Rebecca, you wanna...
Who?
I believe you did.
I asked for planning.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was looking at Joe to come up and get up to the mic, or somebody from planning. I don't think we need you now, because I think enough has been answered. I think enough has been answered.
Okay. Rebecca.
It's already been answered, everything. Yeah.
You're good.
You're good.
You're good.
Here's what I would like to do. I would like to, again, foster what Jim originally said and, you know, make a motion to table this thing for another couple weeks while they can...to see if they can sit down and discuss it and come up to some kind of amicable, neighborly-type scenario on this before we just go ahead and throw the gavel down.
Second.
Well, the problem is...
Well, that's not...that's not the agenda.
Well, we just made a first and a second, so it could go that way, but we would need...
That's not an agenda item. What you proposed is not an agenda item.
I think it could be if it had 100% vote. What is this...what's the verdict on that, Randall?
A motion can be made to continue this, and if it gets a second, there'll need to be a vote on it. I mean, the item is the item that's on the agenda. The action will be whatever this council determines that action to be. It can be continued to the next council meeting. It can be voted on tonight. And that's, as I said earlier, if you make a motion, continue, and it gets a second, it'll take four votes.
I'd also like to hear from some other council members before we even go any further, because it's...I don't think that...I think all we've heard from basically is me, Jim... because it's, I don't think that, I think all we've heard from basically is me, Jim, and Cheryl, and haven't really heard from anybody else, and Jason.
I agree.
Jason had something to say or ask, I know he's like-
Exactly.
I can give a little input on our ward. We're facing an aging population, and we've gotta face that. And in my neighborhood, when people pass away or move into rest homes, their houses get sold and immediately become a rental house. Property values in my ward are plummeting because of that. And rental houses do nothing for property value, and that's what vacant houses either turn into, or they turn into dilapidated properties, which are even worse for your property value.
I'm inclined to agree with that.
That is true.
Can I ask a question of all of you?
Mike, please.
Do you, honestly, can, can all of you say that you would love to have a bed and breakfast next door to you 13 feet away?
I have a-
Well, really, if I can just interject, you're here to look at this location only tonight, and what you may do somewhere else is not relevant.
Okay.
It's the neighborhood and this location.
Well, but I want to hear from the rest of council here on this field.
Yes, I'd like to say something. I've been very quiet and listened to everything that's gone on tonight. There's been a lot of good questions asked, and there's been, I've got a lot of good points made by a lot of other council members here. One of them being Councilman Case has brought it up, and what troubles me the most that I hear tonight is that neither side has gotten together and talked with Mary Beth Cravens, even acting, wanting to be a liaison, and nobody has talked. I think that, I mean, we are bed and breakfast capital. We do good with that. It has proven in a lot of other areas to do well. It brings people to town. I'm not saying this is the perfect location for that. I'm not saying it is yea or nay at the moment for anything, but I, what really I think needs to happen is that this gets continued, and both sides get together and really talk about it, because it does have a lot of good points. I understand, and I'm hearing a lot of the points that, and the very major concerns that all the residents in the neighborhood is having. But I think that it would be better if both sides got together and talked before we come down, because it was said before, we're gonna be the bad guy here, one way or the other, to some, to whoever. Is it bad for the community? Is it bad for the property owner? Is it bad for the neighborhood? That's hard to say when there has been little communication, it appears, and it's obvious. According to the city, it meets all the guidelines and codes, passed through Planning, because, well, it, that's, they're, have to look impartially at this. Impartially, it meets all the criteria to be granted a special use permit. I understand, and then on the other end, the neighborhood is, at right now, adamantly against this. Well, there has been no communication between the, the two parties to come to a meeting of the minds. You may still be adamantly against it after you talk, but I think that that's one thing that needs to be done.
Jeff?
Don't need me to say anything more, I've kinda thrown some stuff out.
There already has been a motion and a second. My question is-
I think somebody else wants to talk.
Yeah.
I just have one more thing to interject. I know we've heard from the people that are buying the house. We've also heard from the people that live around the house, but we haven't actually heard from the people who own the house right now. And, I mean, these individuals have owned this home, it's been vacant for some time, and let's look at really who's willing to put the, their money where their mouth is. So these people have a property that they want to sell, and it's costing them money by the day to keep that property vacant, while you want people to come together and make a meeting. We have buyers who are getting loans, that we're having to extend contracts and extend, extend interest rates so that they can try to buy this house, and so wanting to continue, we've already continued it since our closing date multiple times to try to accommodate the city's timeframes and timelines in which this needs to take place. And I think you're doing the sellers and the buyers a huge disservice if you just can't make a decision.
Thank you.
That's what we, that's what we need.
Thank you.
And once again, he's dismissing our opinions, because you don't own a property, you don't live there.
Yep, you speak when you're on the microphone here.
Mary Beth again, but my question is, who are the buyers? I've heard other names besides their names.
Besides Mrs. Satterley's?
Mm-hmm. Who are the buyers?
Aren't you the buyer?
Yeah. My name's Lucy Satterley.
You're the buyer.
And my sister Rebecca Sellers is the other one.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure, and I did talk to you, and I introduced myself.
Can I, can I have a minute?
Yep. That's 60 seconds.
Okay, I'll make it quick. I, um, I just feel, I am so open to, to anything. I was actually shocked at the Planning Commission that there was opposition to this. Totally blown away, so that's why there was no communication before the Planning Commission. I just showed up to apply for a permit. Honestly, you know, my sister was physically accosted by one of the neighbors after the last meeting, so honestly, I don't know if there is gonna be an open door. I don't have a problem with anyone. Mr. Peak lives next door. I am so empathetic to his situation, and I wanna be, have the rules in place to provide him with a quiet home. I don't want to break laws. I don't want to have my guests park in the alley. I would like to ask Mr. Bothroyd, when you had a conversation with people who were concerned about someone not being on site, what were their concerns, and how can we address them? Is it a safety issue? Is it, I mean-
Of the parking on site?
No, of there not being someone who lives on site.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't get, I mean, I, all you can do is you can, you can understand that just a little bit, kind of-
Right.
Just as an outsider looking in, when someone says, you know, "I'd feel better if they, if someone was living there," I understand that.
Okay, I didn't know if there was something specific.
No, there wasn't anything specific.
No, the specifics that I've had in the discussion is that it's not a neighbor.
Sure.
It's not, it's not somebody that you can go talk to and say, "Your dog's loose, your trash is in my yard." It, it's a perception-
Sure.
That you are not a part of the neighborhood.
Right.
And that's what's been communicated to me.
Sure, and, and I, and I do empathize with that, and I understand they keep calling it commercial, commercial, commercial. We're not gonna be a retail, anything. We're following a proven business model in the crafting industry, where they're always held in residential areas. I feel like we're being upstanding and honest in our plan. We're not trying to, like, sneak anything under the radar and buy the house and turn it into a retreat center. We're, we're doing the proper things, we're gonna pay taxes, and we want to be great neighbors. I ha, I just, I empathize with their situation. They don't want change in their neighborhood as far as, like, a business coming in. I'm open. They can all have my phone number, my email, let's go to lunch. But I am gonna ask for, you know, for you guys to make a decision. And I understand that you're gonna make one of us mad. That's, that's the way it goes. But I'm ready to either get down to business, you know, or not.
Okay, all right, you're, 60 seconds.
Sure, I thank you for your time.
And I think that's, you know, and I think that's fair, and I'm gonna retract my motion.
Okay, I'll take a motion to accept the recommendation to grant special use permit for the bed and breakfast at the location of 710 East Warner Avenue. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Submit your votes. Let's see the votes. By a vote of five, six, I'm sorry, six to one, the resolution to grant special permit is approved. Item number five, city manager report.
I was going to hold my city manager's report to the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Item number six, comments by city council. Mr. Councilman Bothroyd, start with you.
I wanna address the, since I'm first up, I wanna address the halfway house in this neighborhood. I wanna put it on an agenda, and I wanna know why it wasn't brought to us to approve it, and I want it abolished at this point until it comes back through legally, through this board, and then we'll make that decision at that timeframe, and I think that that'll go a long way with tonight's decision. So I would like that on the next, on the next agenda.
So we need city staff to, to research?
Yeah, that never came to me. I've been here for two years, it never came in front of me.
Didn't come to any of us.
Didn't come to you either.
Didn't come to any of us.
Come to none of us, and it needs to, or it needs to, it needs to just go away.
Okay, we need staff to, to research that.
That was never brought to the city as an application. After it was brought to our attention, we did send a letter to the property owner, and we gave them a certain timeframe to produce documentation that it had come before council for some type of approval. At this point, we haven't had a response, so we will pursue that further. And but just, just so it's on the record that they, they did not come through the legal process through the city and submit an application.
Oh, good. So it'll be a cease and desist.
Correct.
Well, that's our, that's the first step, and then we can get some more information, and-
Could I ask a question? After city staff visits with the city attorney, if there is an administrative process to evict that group home, does it need to come to city council before we start that action?
If it doesn't meet, if it doesn't meet our requirements, it shouldn't.
Okay, so if it's something that-
It should just be enforcement.
If it's something that can be addressed administratively, then there would not be a need for it to come.
Absolutely.
Okay.
The only thing it would need to come to council for if it was gonna remain in play, or in place.
Okay, all right, okay, um, I'm sorry.
No, it's not on the agenda really to talk about tonight.
No, this, this item isn't on the agenda.
That item is not, that item is not on the-
I will talk to you afterwards, okay? Anything else, Mr. Bothroyd?
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Case?
No, I've commented enough tonight.
Okay, Mr. Wood?
I think pretty much everything's been said. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
I think they need to get together and do a little more discussion. I kinda agree with Jim down there. I think it still needs to be worked out, talked out, and I don't like the idea of the drug house down the road, if that's what you wanna call it. And I will say one last thing, and I hate to admit this, how about those Sooners, anyway, believe it or not.
I never thought I'd hear that come out of his mouth. Councilwoman Paget?
I can't believe Jeff said that, for crying out loud. But he did.
Why I'm sitting down?
And thank you all for coming and-
I used to consider him my friend.
Sorry about that.
Councilman Smetly?
Thank you, staff, as always. Thank you, everybody, for your input. It is appreciated, and I hope you do sit down and try to meet a common ground.
Just as final comments, we are still looking for some volunteers for a couple of boards. One is the Forest Advisory Board, and the second one is a new commit, committee that we've established for ADA Advisory Committee. It's a nomination from each one of the members of the, of the council, but we'd sure like to have applications for people that are interested in that assistance to our city, and help us make sure that we do everything we can for the, to come in compliance totally with the American with Disabilities Act. With that, ladies and gentlemen, we're adjourned.